I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Father. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the many blessings you've bestowed upon us. Dear Lord God, watch over us as we go about the proceedings in this county. And bless those who serve us. In his precious name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. May I have a chance to look at more? Yes, sir. Make the motion to approve. I say, second, call everybody aye.
Aye.
Community crossings.
We probably need to be out. What time did the bids have to begin? Yeah, plus they had to be in there. I can't. I don't want it. Yeah, do you want to skip? Let's do the bid over the expected. It's on for nine, 10. Someone may be interested in that.
We can do that.
Let's skip that. I'll keep this nine.
Anybody here from that cabin? I didn't see you come in.
I just knocked in.
Sweet little doctor. Hey. Morning, Zach.
Morning. I was hoping to have all three bid them kind of for the health insurance. Don't have them. I got some talking to do with a couple of them. I gave a few things. But I do have some percentages. They aren't releasing to me, but Anthem has already said that they're looking at around 14% lower than what you're paying right now. So, a little out of breath for my out steps. But yeah, so it's living promising. They, all three are excited about the opportunity. You guys are a healthy group. And which I think some of that has to do with, you know, plant use, with the preventive side of that, being able to go out there and get your blood work and get ahead of things before it gets too bad. And then obviously the generic prescriptions that are allowed out there pre for the county employees. That is a very good benefit that you guys offer. But as of right now, I don't have anything to present, but I'm expecting them to come in here in the next few days. So definitely by next time, we should have firm numbers.
That's good.
See what savings are.
I think that's the first time in a long time I haven't heard anybody say something. Come in cheaper.
Savings, yeah, yeah, in the wild world that it is right now.
That's good. Appreciate it, Zach.
Okay. Yeah. I'll be, hopefully next time.
Keep it simple.
Okay.
Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
Great.
The only thing I've got after reviewing the bids from the last meeting, I recommend we award Kentucky on a truck with the truck bid.
Kentucky on?
Yeah, Kentucky on a truck. The dollar amount on that was $209,943 per unit. Planning on purchasing three of them.
That doesn't include the beds?
Yeah, that's everything. Ready to go.
That's total?
Yep.
And then next year on arrival?
Early '25 is my guess.
Twenty-five?
Yep.
Flight Doctor, start it.
Yes, we started Monday, ran into a little trouble with the plant. They're going to have it fixed up today and start back in the morning.
Testing.
I don't think I have anything. There was an ordinance, a proposed ordinance that has been discussed. The problem is the accounting firm that suggested we pass this. You know, Baker Tilly has suggested we pass this to protect, potentially protect the ARP funds that have already been spoken for, accounted for in terms of how those will be spent. So I don't think there's any earth-shattering information in here that's obviously available to the public. It's just outlines cost principles and spending federal funds and how we intend to do that, so.
Motion to change the ordinance.
Or not. A motion to, to Baker Tilly's proposed ordinance regarding federal spending.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance based on the recommendation of our accounting attorney, Baker Tilly.
I'll second that motion. Call favor, say aye.
Aye.
The extension educator, I don't think she's here yet.
Who's that?
We have a new extension educator. She was at the council meeting yesterday, but she's not due till 9:20. Abby, two like time to say is eight. Good morning.
Good morning. Economic Development, so updates. READY 2.0 has been approved in legislature. And right now they're working on how the process is going to work. We should know by end of June what, how the process is going to go. Nobody knows what's going on right now. All we know is it's going to be capital, excuse me, capital projects. No planning, no program programming. They want to focus on rural, so they're looking at infrastructure, things like that. So anybody within the county, city that has a project, let me know. We have really good relationship with both of the economic regions. Our Southern RDA, we already had three projects from them awarded. And John Jones sits on that board and he represents our county. I've been going to just about every meeting, even through the off time, and keeping up on what's going on. So if anybody's interested or wants to know the current process, I'm willing to help. Not sure how it's going to work this time. Last time it was each region had submitted projects in order to get their funding. This time I think the state is just going to allocate money to each region and go by the old plans. This is not federal money. It's not connected to the ARP money. It's going to be state money, so there's not committee federal preparedness, nothing like that. It's going to be a little bit easier. I also heard it possibly could be grants and loans, but I don't know for sure. That was ROI in Bloomington, pulled this up the other day. So there's still money out there and we have another round.
Is this part of that $50 million?
No, this is an additional $50 million. This is an additional $500 million within the state. So all those old numbers are thrown out. This is a totally new process.
Is there a deadline on it?
We don't have a, by the end of June I should know. So hopefully next meeting I'll have some more information. There is a meeting on July, I'm sorry, June 9th, so this Friday. I haven't gotten the location information yet for those, our Southern RDA. And that's where they share a lot of information, so I'll share that as soon as I get it.
So do they submit it to you?
People could, anybody can submit directly to our Southern RDA. You'd have to select, you'd have to send to the RDA or ROI, which is our Northern Region, that is Radius and Regional, well, actually it's the Uplands Region. Regional Initiatives Opportunities, that's what ROI stands for. So for any of that information, let me know. And we just talked to ROI. They're a little bit behind the RDA. For anybody who doesn't know about READY and our Economic Development Regions, our county is a member of two regions, which is, I think there's only two counties in the state that have that happen. So we have a little bit more opportunity. They really, really were going for the big projects last time and they're looking to do more rural projects, but then again, they said that last time. So just keep an eye out. We'll know more by the end of June. So hopefully this week I'll have more information. And I also saw that they, Equus Flight Academy is moving into the Salem Municipal Airport. They have an open house this Friday at 10 o'clock. So.
And who's that?
Equus. They're based out of New Hampshire and they are moving, they're opening a campus here at the Salem Municipal Airport. It's a flight academy training facility. So there's more information if you check out, if you just Google Equus Flight Academy, it'll give you information that this Friday, I think it's, I think it's a 10. And that is the same, and I wanted to go to that, but it's the same time as the RDA meeting. So if anybody's interested, head over there. Let's see what else. The Monon Trail, which I know a lot of people in the community are interested about, concerned about, Radius, which is, we're a member of Radius. They are based out of Bedford. It's an economic development group. A lot of the funding comes from casinos. They purchased the, and this has been in the paper. There's been a lot of information on they purchased the CSX Trail to turn it into the Watten Trail. New Albany owns the New Albany section. So Radius owns from Mitchell to Wharton. There are about 28 miles in Washington County. This is going to be a huge tourist attraction and a great thing for the community. And I know a lot of people are concerned about the construction. There was a meeting last Thursday at the Depot Railroad Museum and we had about 100 people there. The design group, Clark Deeks, was there. And then Taylor Seifert-Williams, who does a lot of the community engagement, they were there also on the Radius. They had boards out showing a mock-up of some ideas. And about 100 people talked to those people and shared information, asked questions. I'm not the one to give a lot of details. I know there's, there's concern about maintenance, railroad crossings. They are going to pay within the municipalities right now. And then hopefully once more funding comes, they'll pay in between. As of now, in between municipalities is going to be like a crushed asphalt gravel stone, compacted. So we are going to be having community meetings and there's going to be one in Salem. And I think it's going to be in July, so keep an eye out. The, let me see. There is a, Monon South Trail is the, there's a Facebook page. So just check on that on Facebook. Monon, Monon South Trail, and it'll give you all the information about it. There's so many Facebook pages and groups. Southern Indiana Trailways is a nonprofit that will be taking care of this trail within our region. So they'll be taking care of maintenance and anything that's going on once this moves forward. And from what they announced Thursday, they're really going to be looking at volunteer groups to keep an eye on keeping it clean and tidy. So it's not just, it's going to be a lot of volunteers that are supposed to keep an eye on them. But it's very, very soon in the process. So I think that's about it for now. But the READY is, it's going to be a big deal. I know it was a little confusing at the beginning last time. And this time we've got a good handle on it, but there's going to be a lot of competition. So we'll do what we can. But the biggest thing, if you have projects, is to have them as complete of an idea or underway as you can, because they want to see timeline, budget, all the steps that you're taking to do this project. They don't want something that is a could be.
So what kind of qualifications are you, are you saying on that?
They are saying they want, they're looking for quality of place, quality of life, housing, childcare, infrastructure, and anything that will go to the community. They want it to be regional this time. Regional being how you're touching the other communities within the region and how you are affecting them. County, county projects, things like that. I think the city's considering some infrastructure that's already going on for additional grants. Don't know if that's going to happen, but the last round, River Ridge and Charlestown got a lot of money for their wastewater treatment plants, their roads. So I'm saying it doesn't hurt to put something together and it does not take a crazy amount of time. I submitted, I think, 15 projects in one region, about eight in the other last time. It's doable. So if there's an idea, we throw it out there. And if they say it doesn't qualify, it doesn't qualify.
Is there a total on that?
Not yet. Moving from $100 million for the state, but I don't know what we're going to be eligible for. So we'll see. And I'll share that. That's all I have. I'm leaving.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Want to bid now?
Yep.
Community crossing bid open. We'll just do these in the order they were received. The first bid is from E&amp;B Paving in Clarksville. The total bid, total project bid is $1,536,160. Is that all you want, Brad? Just the total?
Lump sum will be fine.
Okay. There's three total bids, so the second bid is from CNR Construction in Corde. The total bid is $1,173,925. Again, $1,173,925. And the final bid is from Temple and Temple. Bid amount is $1,251,000, I'm sorry. Again, $1,251,292.
Is that all bids?
That's it.
I recommend accepting all bids for review with CNR being the apparent little bidder.
Should accept all bids as suggested by your.
I would make a motion we accept all bids as suggested by your. I always pardon superintendent.
Second. Call everybody aye.
Aye.
Testing, do you have anything else?
I don't, do you want to talk about that? There's.
Is she here? Maggie, well, the extension, they're scheduled for 9:20. Is she here? They sure are. Come forward, please.
Only take a second. You need us to talk.
Would you sit as speaker, because you don't talk very loud.
I don't talk very loud, I know. So I'm Danielle Walker, the County Extension Director and Ag and Natural Resources educator here in Washington County. This is Sonya Mitchell, our Health and Human Sciences educator. And then behind me is our new 4H educator, Taylor Chastain. And I wanted, we wanted to come and introduce her to you. We have been without a 4H educator since February when Megan Broughton moved to a new position within Purdue Extension. And our office is really excited to have Taylor with us. From Washington County, a lot of really good things about her. We are going to have a meet and greet tomorrow night. I'd like to give you an invitation. And while I do that, if you want Taylor to sit here and say anything about herself, you can ask her to do that. If not, we hope to see you tomorrow.
Does anybody want to say anything?
Well, I was here yesterday.
I like that voice.
Listen, if you do know me, I'm Taylor Chastain, formerly Taylor Savings. I was a tenure 4H member, heavily involved in the 4H program. I taught Ag at Springs Alley for the past five years. So I'm really excited to have a shorter drive to work. And this is always one of my life long dreams, to be here. I did not think I'd be here this fast, but excited because that gives me more time to get to work. So look forward to working with all of you. Thank you for having us.
She doesn't plan to stop making cheese balls. So you're good.
Welcome.
Welcome home.
Welcome.
Hey, she's a ball of fire, I'm telling you. Thanks.
Thank you. Maggie, if you could come forward, please. I need an answer to this. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Good, fine.
Good. So again, just coming to talk about the Governor's Public Health Commission, how our Health Department is potentially receiving a lump sum of money over $306,000 for 2024. And in 2025, it'll be around $608, and that's just the bare minimum. We could potentially receive more money if county, other counties don't opt in. So there's potential to have a lot more. We are required to have certain positions, the state says, with this funding. So there's a lot of shadows we have to meet in order to do that. And one of them is a life risk assessor we have to have and a preparedness person that would, that's, a lot of preparedness has come up from COVID because the state has realized that counties are not in the position where they are prepared for any disaster. So we need to have a dedicated employee to do that. Currently, our nurses are doing that. So that would be taken away from them and have one person just focused on that. So we're looking at an environmental health inspector to help with our environmentalists. And that would be the employee that would do the life risk assessor so that they would do dual jobs. And then we would have a, we're looking at a vector control part-time employee just for the summer, like from April to the first of October, end of October. And they would just come in a couple of days a week and spray around Washington County and keep up with the mosquito control population. And then we have to have that dedicated part-time preparedness or full-time. And we're looking at least a full, potentially full-time since we have the money available. And then a health educator, either part-time or full-time, just to offset what our nurses are doing. So that way they can try to reach and go into the schools and get more active into that. We're also looking at doing some advertising ads, some billboard, radio ads, anything to just promote the Health Department, what vaccines we have at that moment, schools, mosquito control, anything that we have going on. And then with the life risk assessor, there's going to be supplies that they're going to have to have and just necessary things that we already do. We have what's called a local health trust and a local health maintenance fund currently. And when this meeting takes effect in the first of January, it's going to be called the local public health funding. It'll no longer be the trust and the maintenance. That money that we have in those accounts will stay there if we would like to choose to spend it. But our new funding will not be dumped into those two line items anymore. It'll have its new line item specifically for this.
What kind of problems do you see down the road with this?
Kind of problems?
Yep.
I mean, there's always like unseen things that's going to happen. I mean, you never know. We don't ever guarantee money, so.
Do you see a number cracking in the room?
Yes, in the long run, because in 2025, we're going, we're only receiving half the money in 2024. In 2025, we're going to be doubling it, plus have our Health Department fund going on as well. So we're going to be limited on space next year. I think we're going to be fine just because the environmentalists and the vector control, they won't be in the office 100% of the time, every day, throughout the week. It'll be more on the nursing side where a preparedness employee would be, a health educator, anybody that we would perceive needing to hire to do certain services. We can, we can make it work. It's just eventually it's going to get, right?
Have you talked to surrounding counties?
Have I talked to surrounding counties?
Yeah.
Very little. I mean, they're just, they're all still trying to figure out too what they're going to be spending the money on.
I think we all are.
Yeah. And they've said that, the state has said, all 92 counties are in the same boat. It's just a, here's this money, here's the services we're wanting. And they said there's not a one size fits all on it. But it has to stay within the Health Department. That money cannot go to other departments.
I know all counties are doing it. I know they are. Some counties are already signing up.
Yes.
I know it's a limited amount that we're going to get. And it's only based on how many's in the program, what money gets distributed out. And that being the case, I think there, if I'm not mistaken, there is a deadline and there's going to be a point where nobody can opt into this program.
September 1st is when you guys have to submit it. So you can submit it between now and September 1st, but after that, you guys, we won't be considered. The Health Department, on my side of it, I have to submit a budget as well by September 1st. So both of our parts have to be in. And if one is and the other's not, then we're not considered. There is also a, I have to be specific on money. It's a 60/40 split, so only 40% can go toward, 40% or less can go towards environmental. So that's our food and our environmentalists. And then 60% or more can go towards the nursing side. So more like the communicative diseases, the trauma intervention, the health education, that kind of stuff. So there is certain requirements I have to meet. And the state has said they will review those. And if we're over our 60%, or no, if we're over our 40%, they'll reject it and they'll send it back same way after critique that money and move it and get it below that, or right at the 40 or below. And there's certain goals we will have to meet. I will have, they said at least, I know once a year, if not twice a year, they'll submit a survey and we have to submit it and look at a timeframe saying like, this is what we're doing, this is, this is the jobs we have and this is how much they're doing and where our numbers are and everything. So we're going to have, we already do that at the end of every year. We already submit a annual report and you guys get a copy of it too. It's just, it's going to be more detailed with additional. It's just, it's going to be more in detail with additional money. And the whole state of Indiana got awarded $100 million for the first year, and every year after that is $200 million to go towards public health.
I know it's going to benefit our health department.
Yeah, because the amount of money we will potentially receive bare minimum next year meets just a little less than what the health department probably gets every year, and that's just for five full-time staff and to 12, five full-time and a part-time. And Alicia is already, her salary's already taken out of the money that we would be giving. So it'll be a really big plus for us. It's just going to take us time to get in the groove and know what to do. And they said we don't have to hire immediately in the first year. They kind of already expect that, and they already said they don't expect us to do everything they want within the first year or two, because of getting everything worked out.
Does that include new hires?
Yes, yeah, probably new hires. Like, say, we get this money first in here, is when they said that money will get dumped into our funds, say, three, four months down the road, we start hiring, and then training and everything, getting them up to speed. So it'll take a process, but yeah, we don't retire first of the year.
Lisa, you were the COVID coordinator, if I remember right.
I'm Alicia, but yes.
Or...
I'm Alicia, Lisa's mother.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You, I think part of your salary was funded through part of that grant now.
All of my salary is. It's not really considered a grant, it's more like state funds, but it's based, like, if that money runs out, then she doesn't have a job, is what it is. It's a set amount per year, and I work until that's gone, and then I just have to wait till the next year when it restarts.
So you don't know for sure if that funding will be available for you?
That's now part of this.
So if we don't opt into this funding, we will still have a local health trust maintenance.
Okay, let's, let's take a conversation, let's assume we are going to go forward with it. So that being said, well, how does that affect you? Will you, you will remain full-time, right?
No, I'm only part-time now to make that last for the year.
Yesterday, I mentioned maybe she might want to go full-time, and I think right now, I'm just going to stick with the part-time.
So in the year, the coming years, you, you want to remain part-time?
Yes, I also work for the hospital.
Okay, so you would need to hire an additional part-time nurse?
Part-time, if not a full-time, and it would be more like a health educator, so they would be going and doing health education classes. They could partner with Purdue and go teach and different stuff, or try to reach into our schools, like talk to superintendents and try to get into the schools and teach.
So for right now, let's talk about, just briefly, the minimum requirement. Say, say if we did the bare minimums, one of the bare minimums would be a part-time nurse slash educator.
Yeah, so like a school health nurse liaison, yeah.
And then the other bare minimum position would be a combination of the environmental technician and lead risk coordinator. Now, the environmental technician, I don't want to jump around here, but this all ties in together, because we're going to have to make a decision real quick, and as you know, budget's coming up in August, and in a perfect world, we would like to have all this sorted out before budget time, and obviously, the September 1st deadline, when you have to submit this. So I've been advocating behind the scenes somewhat, and trying to put a bug in the health department board's ear about the need for an additional environmental technician, because in addition to septic approvals and existing septic maintenance, for example, in 2021, we had over 70 new home starts in this county, which may be surprising to some, but that's 70 new septic permits. And I've been trying to push Chris Bowing into tooting his bugle a little bit about getting him some help, and...
This money will be able to help do that.
That's what I, that's what I know. Now, my big concern is not only in addition to this and mosquitoes and lead paint, I have a real problem with abandoned buildings, dilapidated buildings, trash, household trash in yards, and you see it all over the county. It makes me sick when I drive down the road and I see some, some beautiful, well-kept homes and homesteads and farms, and then I see a junk pile. This is uncalled for, there's no reason why people should throw household trash out their front door. And I, and I hope that when we add this employee, that they would kind of help address this issue some, because it's a health ask.
Yeah, what we probably will do, I still need to talk to the board, our health board, and we don't meet until the middle of July. So once I can get them to approve what we're looking at, what we spend with this money, I will then submit it quickly to Michelle, and I've already talked to her about that, so that way you guys can have it before your August budget, so then you can still review it. But with that, though, our environmentalist, he, Chris, can still do the septic updates and whatever, but we'll split those job duties up, so that way it's not just solely on him. It would take the vector control out, if we had a part-time person, so he wouldn't have to focus on mosquito control. And then those two environmentalists can split up the job, one can focus on septic updates, one can focus on the complaint side of it, and do the enforcement.
Because as you well know, one of the biggest limiting factors to this whole process is you have limited space, and that, that's, that's a really big issue.
Yes.
So we need to, we need to address that, because obviously, it's foolish to hire someone if you don't have a workspace for them.
I think in 2024, though, we will be fine. We've kind of already, just like, we've all discussed it, that we can make space for what we need at that current time. So maybe more in 2025, we focus on it, because then we can see, like, okay, this is where we're at, we might get more, we're going to get more money. Maybe we can see, like, what else we need to just bring a job and do. So maybe not in 2024 focusing on it, because we can make it work, it's just not the most doable, but...
Now, one other thing I might suggest, when you have your health board meeting, if you would kind of keep us up to date on, on when that would be, I think it would be wise to have one commissioner and a councilman present at the meeting, so everyone's on the same page, because we need to be real careful. I'm always very leery of, when someone gives you something free, there's almost always strings attached, and there are, especially if it's the federal government or the state government, they, they always want something in return, so...
I can tell you, if you want to write it down, our next meeting will be July 12th, at 4:00.
July 12th, 4:00?
Yes. So if you want to come, that's when we'll be there.
How, how, government building?
Yeah. Will you, it depends on what all we have going on. We'll meet in the nurses' clinic room. If it's bigger, then we'll go over to the conference room.
Okay, can you assist the deputy?
Okay.
And this is all much larger than Maggie's even touching, because this is only specific to the health department. Their funding's even larger than that. They even have their own supply, they're getting specific to EMS also for our county. Indiana has some of the worst ratios for its health and mortality, and so they're trying to become more equal to all the surrounding states around us to try and get...
Yeah, I think homeland security is getting a good chunk of money, but we're like 45th in the nation for public health funding. Like, we're very short on funding, and like she said, our, our health rate for the state of the United States is pretty high.
The game of this program can be beneficial to this county.
Correct, absolutely.
And to the citizens of the county itself.
Yeah, well, because mainly our health fund that we get from you guys right now, just goes, a lot of it goes toward salaries and social security and that kind of stuff, so we don't have a lot to go toward services.
So our job here is to try and prevent any health episodes, educate as much as we can to try and make people healthier, and then if something comes up to a minor degree, try and run it as far as lead or immunizations, STDs type things, tobacco cessation, but then fortunately, they are also, Homeland Security will be sending money to EMS, so they can do more acute things.
That's, that's like I said, we're only touching a part of...
Oh, yeah, we only see a little bit of surface right now.
We can always find the room. Is there any else?
Go ahead. Thank you, I appreciate all of this kind of, also, when someone gives you large sums of money, it needs more work too.
We, we have been watching webinars like weekly, bi-weekly, like, it's constant, and we're hitting spreadsheets all the time and showing like statistics of where we're at. So there's a lot that's going into it.
We thank you for coming in. Keep us informed, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't realize she was one to give shots.
Yeah. See you later.
Thank you. Did you have anything else before you could, did you talk about that?
Did you want to add some flash or anything?
What is it?
Or, or some... From what Maggie talked about, middle of the mission. Are you ready to live off or do you want to...
I'm ready.
Really?
Yes. What a bad...
It's what it is, it's a proposed resolution that looks like it's being passed by each county in the state of Indiana that's willing to accept these state funds for the local health department's office. I don't have any...
The recess till 1:00?
Yeah. Close, that's a negative, so...
You know what you did, Jerry? I'll say that, call for it, or say that.
Right.
You'll hear yourself out of the chair.
Yeah.